This is the regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees on June 15, 2021. Yesterday was Flag Day. That means that 244 years ago, Second Continental Congress established Old Glory as our nation's flag. So if you would please, with that spirit in mind, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Morrison, do we have any special recognitions tonight?
We actually do not this evening.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We do have a number of public comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and so I will ask Ginny Druud to come up. And Ms. Druud, I will be your timekeeper if you don't mind.
I'll keep it short. Good evening. I want to thank you all for your hard work this year. This was a very difficult year for literally everyone, and you all handled it with grace. I am truly thankful to live in Montgomery and that my children attend MISD like I did. When I first heard about the opportunity to be a part of the strategic planning meetings, I was a little skeptical. It is not often that a school district opens its doors for opinions, advice, and criticism. But my husband and I attended or decided to attend after realizing that there were no electives for my sons at my son's junior high that met his interest, nor were there electives for sped students like him. Or I should say, one that did meet his, or I should say, one did meet his interest, but I was told that he should not bother signing up for it because only a few students are chosen, and he would not be one of them. At the last meet, at the last strategic planning meeting, when the final plans were laid out, I was so excited to learn that more electives would be added, more programs to prepare students for life after high school would be offered, and more specifically, that they would be open for all students. I did not attend the school safety portion of the planning meetings, but I am very happy to learn that this will be a priority going forward. My son did not feel safe at school this year. In fact, he felt like a target. But in junior high, having autism and Tourette syndrome can have that effect on you. I would like to make one thing clear. My son did have amazing teachers, and his assistant principal did everything in their power to make this situation, to try to help the situations, but they cannot be expected to reparent every student. I am hoping that these new plans will help kids like my son not have their civil rights trampled on, picked on daily, pushed out of the way, and told, "Go away, no one likes you," multiple times a day. I heard the school has plans to implement a new program to teach students about autism, and I truly hope this does come to fruition. When we are young, we're often taught to be kind and to not stare at the person who is wheelchair-bound or who looks differently. But what about the person who thinks differently or behaves a little strangely? These kids need more advocates within the school. They need more people on their team. They need more students to stand up for what is right and to be a friend to the friendless. As a school board, if you vote to adopt the new strategic plan, I look forward to watching MISD grow to being the greatest school district in Texas. I look forward to a time when my son is not bullied every day in junior high for being differently able, and I look forward to when he feels safe and accepted at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Adam Simmons, who, if you don't mind me saying, is a former MISD board member as well. So, Mr. Simmons?
Like a bad penny, I keep on turning. First off, I wanted to congratulate everyone up here on a wonderful finish to the school year. I live vicariously through my kids now, and it seems as though things went as well as they could. So I'd just like to commend each and every one of you for the role that you played in a successful year and a very tough and difficult year. I wonder if Gary and Trey are gonna watch this because, as usual, they're not here. So, anyway, I don't want to take up much of your time today. I know you have bigger fish to fry. But I, if you don't know, especially some of the new people on the board, two years ago was nominated to serve on the Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. That is the governance side of the appraisal district, not the valuation side. So if you're mad at people for raising your tax value, I'm not the guy to talk to. But my two-year term is up this December, and the reason I'm here today is just to put a bug in your ear and let you know that I don't believe you have a July board meeting, at least I hope you don't. And so in August, MCAD should be sending out the nomination forms. And last, two years ago, as a board, we made the decision to nominate myself after Trey declined the original nomination, if memory serves. And so my term is up in December. And so what I wanted to make sure that you all knew as a board is that in August, if you're struggling someone to nominate, I will throw my hat in the ring again for the district and make sure that I represent MISD well at the district office. So the nomination process is in August. The actual voting takes place November, early December. I can't quite remember exactly when, but I'll be getting that information to Debbie and to Heath as well, Dr. Morrison. And the reason I'm here is to just let each and every one of you know that if you have any questions about what my role is at MCAD, what we do, what we've done over the last two years, we're very proud of a litany of different things, and rather than bore you, I'm happy to meet with each one of you one-on-one. We can do Zoom call, we can text message, we can just have a phone conversation. So again, just wanted to let everyone know that I'm certainly interested in serving another term if y'all have me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that is all that we have for public comments tonight. And therefore, we will move on to our consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen on the board, are there any items that a board member wishes to pull off the consent agenda?
No.
All right, hearing none, then do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
All righty. Mr. Hopkins, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Turner, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Consent agenda carries. Next, our action items. We have a very big action item tonight, and Dr. Morrison, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. We are really excited to culminate one aspect of this journey in creating a strategic plan for our school district. It feels like the several board meetings ago, but it was all the way back in October where the board approved the five goals that really had been our North Star. Goals around having outstanding academic achievement for every student, keeping every student and staff member safe in our school district, being good fiduciary officers of taxpayer dollars, creating world-class human capital that will attract and retain and grow great employees in our district, and then an agreement to partner and collaborate and communicate with our community on behalf of creating great schools. And from those five goals, we pledged that we were going to cast a wide net, that we were going to reach out to this community and not put forward a plan that was my plan, or quite frankly, even to put forward a plan that was your plan. We wanted it to be the community's plan on how we're going to make a commitment to serve every single student in Montgomery ISD. You can always look back, and I play Monday morning quarterback all the time with, "We could've done this, or we could've done that." But we have had numerous public meetings, town halls, going out to our schools, PTO, PTA meetings, surveys, Zoom conferences, numerous task force meetings, all trying to make sure that we created a plan that, again, was our community's plan and our pathway forward. And it was an incredible journey, and we are at one stage of that journey tonight, which is to bring forward the plan that we shared with you as a draft several weeks ago in your workshop. And from your feedback and your comments, we've made further changes and modifications to the plan. But we bring that plan forward to you tonight for your consideration and your approval. And then, in some ways, the real work begins because it's great to have a plan, but then you have to work that plan on behalf of your students and staff. I am super proud of the way we've developed this plan, and I'm really proud of the leaders that have continued to emerge with new aspects of their leadership throughout this journey. And that's our principals, my senior team, but two people that were indispensable in the creation of this plan, Dr. Kathryn Bartlett, the principal of Lone Star Elementary, and Justin Moreno, our executive director of communications, both who led this process. So, Justin, please come forward and let's take this home.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Morrison. Thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to co-lead the strategic plan with Dr. Bartlett. I'm pleased and proud to present the strategic plan, the pathway to premier. You've heard a lot about the need for information, and that's really how this started, is after the board adopted the five goals, we formed a large task force that grew and grew and grew, each focused on one of the goals. And in December, all of those task forces convened individually and began the journey to gather information that would lead to the district initiatives and strategies and KPIs that ultimately became part of this plan. We had task force meetings where we did SWOT analysis. We held town hall meetings, one at each high school and a junior high school. We held public, we issued a public survey to gather information. Folks that participated on task forces provided input, and we wanted input from folks that may not have had the time to serve on a task force. So we said no to no individual that wanted to participate in this process. The KPIs, again, they were developed from our discussions during town hall meetings. Task forces broke it down into subcommittees where they identified areas that they really wanted to investigate further on a deeper level. We had external reviews of the district and, again, issued a district-wide survey during the process. So the components of the strategic plan start with the five goals and the performance objectives. And then each performance objectives has at least one key performance indicator of measurable targets that are aspirational but achievable. And then the strategic plan lists district initiatives and strategies that are intended to empower the district to meet or achieve the targets in the KPIs. There will be some data that is necessary for baseline levels to start our journey once the strategic plan is approved. There is currently an RFP open right now for district-wide surveying. We believe it's important that a third party conduct the surveying for the strategic plan. Baseline data will be gathered in September. So right now, you'll see in the strategic plan, there are several areas where it says baseline data needed. That information will be filled in once gathered in September, and then for the three years of the plan, the surveying will take place in May '22, '23, and '24. So the strategic plan is really the district level, which will feed into campus improvement plans and district improvement plans, which is really exciting. There are certain components of the strategic plan that will feed into individual campuses and departments. And as Dr. Morrison mentioned, the real work actually does begin tonight because, once approved, the board meetings next year will look different. You'll have individual department updates and updates from the goals, each goal at a board meeting. So you'll be able to track the progress of the board goals and the task force committees throughout the year.
Justin, if I can, we can go back to that again for our public. The board's critical role in oversight cannot be diminished, and for the board to be able to do that at the level that this board wants to, you have to have good information and data. And that's why we constantly say with the key performance indicators that have been suggested and that are part of this plan, almost all of them either are data that we will get from the state, data that comes from another source that is not the district, or it will be coming from survey data that will come from a third-party provider. That way, the data is, can be authenticated outside of our district. It's not that we want you to trust us, and we want to earn that trust, but it's really important for a strategic plan and the board to be able to ask questions and look at data and not have to question the validity or the accuracy of the data.
So we do have a video that we'd like to share with you that speaks to the journey that we embarked upon beginning in November.
Every organization really needs a North Star, and you either have a plan or you're searching for a plan. And so we are doing so many great things in this district, but a comprehensive plan that really focuses our efforts on how we're going to provide an excellent academic program for every single student, how we're going to keep our commitment to keeping every student safe and our faculty safe, how we're going to use our resources as efficiently and effectively as possible, how we're going to have a premier workforce and keep that premier workforce, and how we're going to continue to collaborate and communicate with our community. All of those things are critically important.
In October, our Board of Trustees adopted five goals that targeted the five main areas of our strategic plan. This guided our process as we moved forward. And those goals are academic achievement, school safety, finance and operations, human capital, and communication and customer service. One of our guiding principles at the beginning of our planning process was to make sure that all of our goals, our strategies and initiatives that we put into place to achieve those key performance indicators would be aspirational but achievable. We had three town halls in which we gathered input from everyone.
We don't have one high school. We don't have one elementary. We have multiple schools, and even in the district is big acreage-wise, you have different demographics from each school. So you need to pull voices from all those different spots.
Taking up all of those thoughts and ideas and questions and different strategies that we see on all of the different campuses and getting that input from our community members, from employees, from our students, from the parents of our boys and girls, we are able to put together a plan and start achieving some goals and use that data for the good of all of the boys and girls in Montgomery ISD.
The Goal One task force was comprised of students, teachers, parents, other district staff members, and we were able to spend months working on what we felt would be the best chartered path for Montgomery ISD.
We talked about providing our teachers and students with a viable and strong and challenging curriculum, but also assessing our students and making sure they progressed and grow throughout the year while also supporting our teachers with the tools and the resources that they needed in the classroom in order to be effective.
It was a powerful process. Our focus was school safety, and on our task force committee, we had principals, teachers, law enforcement, and the thing that I thought was pretty awesome, we even had students serving on the committee. The safety of our students is the ultimate priority, not only their physical safety, but also their social emotional safety. So that's something that we really talked about. You know, the mental health aspect of students these days is so important. I think it's an awesome process. I appreciate Dr. Morrison leading the charge for that in our district.
We worked with several teachers, community leaders, and even other administrators, assistant principals. When we served at the town hall meetings, we got to do some SWOT analysis and really dig deep as far as what they saw as strengths and weaknesses and things that may needed to be addressed as it related to operations and our finance. Some of the key things that came out, certainly in a time of COVID and online learning, was talking about the technology infrastructure. Also, compensation came out a lot, and so we began to work through those pieces. Also, they shared a lot of the strengths around our child nutrition program, certainly our instructional program. Our teachers are our most important assets for our district and how that went hand-in-hand with wanting to make sure that we compensated them appropriately so that we can keep our quality teachers. And then looking at all our different structures as it relates to transportation, our work orders and maintenance, and how we make sure that we're addressing whether it's our students' or teachers' needs in a timely manner and serving our campuses.
Our strength is our human capital. So our strength is in our employees and in the people that do the work in our district. We've got to do something as far as compensation, but if we're gonna compensate and compete, then we also wanted to develop. Our task force was made up of so many different community members, and so the opinions and the experiences of all of those really kind of drove our next steps. Community members would bring in things from a parent perspective, and we're like, "We've never thought of it like that before." Board members, we were allowed to see things from their perspective, and then, of course, teachers on the inside doing the work. And then our community business partners gave their perspective, and it was just a neat, a neat vision and a way to see it through a different lens.
Top-notch customer service and communications is essential for us as a district to become the premier district in the state of Texas. We met several times. We met virtually, and we also got to meet in person. And during those meetings, we came up with strengths and weaknesses. Some of the key takeaways for me while we were doing that is just, obviously, ways to continue to build on our customer service and ways to communicate to our district. And through that, I think one of the takeaways for me was maybe the website. I think it's super exciting. I think it is something that, as for me, myself, a campus principal has always wanted. And from this, it gives us definitely goals and what to strive for for each campus, for our campuses alone and district-wide, to make us the premier district.
The strategic plan will serve as our North Star for how we lead this district. It will help schools develop their school improvement plans to be aligned to the district plan. It will help departments in their service of those schools create plans that will support schools in service of that strategic plan. It will help our board members in terms of directions going forward. It will help us think about how we budget because, as we create a school budget, that budget will also be aligned to the strategic plan. And so it really is a guiding document. It will change, it will evolve, but it will keep us focused, and it will keep us the key priorities of our mission to educate every child with excellence and strength.
I think this is a huge step, and people in the district and community have seen this and have seen the progress in the past year and the progress that'll come in the next year is because of what we're, the stones, building stones that we're putting in place at this point.
So from the beginning, we wanted this process to encompass everyone, a really diverse group of people, not just a plan that was developed by central administration or campus leaders. And I'm happy to say that as we ended the process and we have developed a strategic plan, all stakeholders in our district have had a say, and that's really exciting to look at. This is Montgomery ISD's plan.
And to be part of the process hands down some of the best work that I think Montgomery's ever done.
I want, comments, you mind? So I want to say a special thank you to everyone who has been involved, parents in particular who have come out, staff members. I do this kind of work for a living, and I have not seen a process that has been this grassroots and this organic in a long time, if ever. So that the community knows what we work towards, what this will give our community is a document that, first of all, is very visually appealing. This is very beautiful, Justin, the document you've created, and Kathryn, thank you all. But it also gives us something that we're gonna begin using called the Balance Score Card, and it shows us that in certain years, we will meet certain topics, certain measurement areas. So if you have a concern as a parent, we'll be able to look at you, look at these data and say, you know, "We're not there yet," or "We are." Another part of this that I think I've been very impressed with is that this team, Dr. Morrison, yourself, you guys have not shied away from having problems. And what I mean by that is you have not tried to cover up when we have a problem. You have not tried to say that, you know, "We're just not gonna do anything about it. There's no issue here. There's nothing to see." Pay no attention to the man behind the screen, right? So we can't do that kind of work without that kind of similar commitment from you guys, and I want to just call that out and say thank you for that. Board members, are there any other questions, comments, or observations that you'd like to make before we kind of get into the nitty-gritty and talk about the strategic plan?
I just want to say, when it was presented to us, I guess it was about a week and a half ago or so in here, it was just so much. It was just amazing what's been done in a year that was so hard. And as I listen to that and read over it, the things that come to mind that this brings to our district is accountability, an easy way to keep people accountable, expectations are set, we're all moving in a united direction, transparency as we see over the next year how we're doing in meeting these goals, and it gives us things to celebrate when we do meet those goals. And so it's just very exciting, and it just takes care of so much that we needed, so.
So it's been remarkable. I mean, I'm stunned as to how far we've gotten in the time that, you know, it's really not been that long a time to put this whole initiative together. And the administrators have done a fantastic job. And I was, we were in the last workshop, it was amazing to me to watch everybody working together, and everybody knew what each other was doing and understood each other's topic and content, right? And that was really, really interesting to me. But one thing about Montgomery is we love our schools, and we are more passionate about these schools than I think anything. So Montgomery ISD is very near and dear to my heart and is near and dear to the community. And I think what's more important to me is how the level of engagement that Dr. Morrison, that you and your staff had with the community was hugely important. And also, this strategic plan, as it moves forward, is not only transparent for us as board members to be able to manage and to be able to make decisions, it's also transparent to the community. And I think that's one of the most important things, is these goals, the KPIs, the metrics, all of that is widely available and published to begin with, and it's all going to be here for everybody to see, and that's a huge step forward.
Do we happen to know approximately how many people had input on this?
Justin, we have, I think in the last page we were to try to put, because there's well over 300 that I think actually participated in some aspect of actually helping craft the plan, and then far beyond that, they gave input through surveys, so.
Yeah, we do have a page on the back of the strategic plan, which will be posted on the website this evening if you do approve it, that well over 100 individuals gave their permission for us to use their name on the plan. And then, you know, we had dozens of individuals that came out of the town hall meetings and through the survey, we had over 1,000 responses to that survey. So again, this wonderful community engagement throughout the development process.
And I think one of the cool things, and I think Dr. Fuller mentioned it, but throughout the process, you know, you're still, with all the challenges we had this year, and then, you know, there are times where someone will come up and say, "I have an issue with this in the district or a school." And inevitably, we would say, "Hey, by the way, do you know we're working on a strategic plan? Would you like to serve?" And they would kind of look at you sometimes like, "You do recognize I'm here because I'm upset about something." And we're like, "Yes." And the only way we're gonna help make it better systemically is if we get that input because, you know, the angman chorus is not gonna get us to where we need to be. And I just walked into one task force meeting, and I saw three individuals that had come very upset about different things, but afterwards, they came and talked about how much they felt valued to be a part of this journey. And that commitment, again, tonight, is an important part of the process, which is hopefully the board approving the plan. But as we work the plan and we implement the plan, and then as we start to share with the community our progress on the Balance Score Card, there will be times when we are presenting data to the board, and we'll have it all color-coded, and if we're hitting our targets, it will be green; if we're exceeding it, it will be blue; if we're in close, but we're not quite there, it'll be yellow; and if we're behind where we need to be, it will be red. And there will be times where we'll be sharing data that will be red and yellow, and we're, I'm not gonna say we'll be excited about that, but we're not gonna shy away from it because that's gonna allow this board to ask questions. And what I value about this community, this board, our town, is I don't, the reason I don't shy away from it is because, A, that is accountability, but B, there's not a spirit of "got you." People want to see our but B, there's not a spirit of got you. People want to see our district be better. And so those questions will be, are we resourcing something right? Have we staffed it right? Do we have the right initiatives? Is there some issue that's blocking our progress that collectively this board, our community, our schools can do to address that issue? And so we're not going to shy away from the times where the data isn't where we need it to be. There does be a fierce devotion to get it to where it has to be.
And I appreciate you saying that. And I think, and hopefully, that resonates with the administrative staff as well, because we don't want it. We don't always want to have the green picture, right? It's not realistic. So when we have things that are red, it's there for a reason. It's there for us to take action and try to make an adjustment.
And Mike, I hope you all are really proud of your principals and your staff, because I have worked in organizations where we've done some aspects of this. And when you start to put the complexity and the key performance indicators, you start to have people, well, yeah, you know, do we really want to be measured on that? Or, and our principals and our staff not only have not shied away from it, they've embraced it. And that's something I don't take for granted. I'm very grateful for that.
And I think they, you know, the principals, the staff, teachers, everybody involved in this, just done a fantastic job. I mean, this is huge work to get here in COVID and all those things that we've been dealing with. This is a huge initiative, and everybody did it in a way that was just remarkable.
I don't know how we can congratulate you and your staff adequately enough concerning this, how quickly you've done. I remember when we didn't have measurable goals, we've come so far.
This is well beyond that, right?
Yes, we have way gone beyond that. Our trajectory is to...
A lot of goals next year in data, for sure.
You've all done a fantastic job. I mean, I'm just, I'm personally very, very happy and excited.
Well, I am too, but I want to say some of the congratulations till we get this thing passed. I do have one question. So this takes us to, actually, I have two questions. This takes us to 2024. Okay, so what's 2024, what's 2025 going to look like for this effort?
Yeah, so actually, there are elements of the plan that actually encompass five years, because there are state through House Bill III, there are certain academic measures that have to be progress monitored over five years. And so some of the KPIs and some of the targets are five-year targets. The majority of targets are designed to be three years. And so the thing about any plan, and I had shared this with the board before, but I went through a training program with a three-star general, and he had a saying that in the military, battle plans don't survive first contact with the enemy. And what he meant was that plans evolve, and as conditions change, you're constantly changing the plan, you're adding new strategies, or, and then hopefully, there's a lot of areas where we're hitting our targets. And so then we'll come forward to the board and say, either we haven't set the targets robustly enough, or we've, really, not that the work is done, but maybe we move off of those targets because some new priorities have emerged. So the document becomes a living, breathing document. And after three years, I think what we'll do is come back to the board and give another way that we will refresh that plan and go out and do similar community engagement. So it won't be that in three years, we'll start off with a completely different plan, but the plan will evolve as our district grows and changes.
Well, that kind of takes my second question, makes it moot a little bit. And that was if in the interim, if we find things that we want to maybe add to some measurements, there are a few things that I thought we could include, maybe beef up. There are none that are so major that I want to offer an amendment tonight. You know, that's not what I'm saying. Everything else is minor. But if there was something like that, we could, there's a process for us to go ahead and do that.
Absolutely. The monitoring calendar that was shared every month, there'd be some aspect of the strategic plan, either a department sharing how it's committed to moving the strategic plan forward with their own KPIs that are be aligned to the strategic plan, or there'd be presentations of the actual goals. And so, for example, when we get state data from, you know, the most recent round of testing, we're do a lot of the academic indicators in goal one. There are different areas at times that makes more sense. For example, goal four, being around hiring, you know, we're do a lot of that later in the spring. So each month, there will be some aspect of the strategic plan that we'll be looking at, and you all will ask questions on behalf of the community, and we will come back with new answers and new ways to approach the plan.
All right. So the last question for me, I promise. How do we implement this? What's the first thing we do tonight, tomorrow, if this is passed? And how do you start getting this out, Justin?
Well, if you do choose to approve this tonight, as I mentioned, it will be posted on the website. And there is an RFP open right now for surveying, because we do need several baseline survey data items. So that survey process will begin in September. And then we will be able to fill in those baseline data numbers to see where we're starting to ultimately determine where we want to be, I remember aspirational but achievable. So the strategic plan does take effect for the start of the next school year.
And then additionally, we've already shared the document template form for the principals as they're working on their campus improvement plans. So campus improvement plans will be aligned to the strategic plan. And then departments will also be working on a similar plan. And so that alignment is a critically important facet of moving this forward.
I want to say something about the surveys that you talked about. I just hope and I encourage anybody, parents, teachers, when you, that take the time to do those surveys, because we want the data, and it's very important. And I hope by now that it's been proven that we're open to the communication from, and the input from everyone. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you think the community involvement's going to be greater as we go? Each year, it's going to be more and more?
That's our, that would be our goal, is to always increase input, increase the number of folks that are engaged in communicating with the district.
I think with everybody knowing that their voices are being heard now, more people are going to come forward and make this the best place it is.
We hope so. Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions? All right, then, can I hear a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented?
I'll make a motion, approve the Montgomery Independent School District strategic plan as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Ms. Turner, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained? That motion carries. So congratulations. And again, let's go ahead and say it one more time. I want to say sincere congratulations to everyone, especially along the left of the room, especially a lot of the parents that have been involved. Thank you. I could not have envisioned this a few years ago. In that vein, on our path to premier, let's talk about how our buildings get us there. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. One of the things we promised the board early on, and has been fundamentally important on every aspect of the development of strategic plan, is to get data that is needed for us to make good decisions, for us to really adequately assess where we are versus where we need to be. And we have contracted with different providers to get us those much-needed data. Early in the year, this board was able to hear from CASB on a comprehensive staffing report of how we staff our schools and programs and departments in Montgomery ISD. Shortly thereafter, you also received an HR review to help us make substantive improvements in that important aspect of our school district. Several weeks, several months after that, you've got the demographic study that gave us an indication of, over the next several years, what should we expect in terms of enrollment in our district. And we're very pleased to see good growth being projected over the next several years. And another important component that was promised, and tonight we have an opportunity to deliver, is a facilities assessment. Some folks might say, well, what is that? Why is it important? Our buildings are a source of pride in our community. We have really good schools, but they are buildings, and buildings all the time need care and support. And obviously, the older the buildings get, the more some of that support becomes problematic. And we have a commitment through our strategic plan that you just adopted to keep students and staff safe, and that's goal two. And an important aspect of that is facilities, as well as also being good fiduciary officers of taxpayer dollars, that we have to be thoughtful about what we need to do and the investments we need to make in our facilities. Ultimately, all of it is to make sure that our facilities do what we need to do in goal one, which is to provide safe and exciting places for our students to learn and teachers to be able to teach. So the facilities assessment is really for us to be able to say, as our district continues to grow, where are we with our facilities? Are they where they need to be? And if we have needs, what are those needs? And then to start constructing a plan over the next several years of how to address challenges and issues that are found and discovered. So with that, I turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Finance, Mr. Chris Lunt.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Good evening, members of the board. As Dr. Morrison said, we've embarked on this journey at the end of 2020 with issuing an RFQ for Facility Assessment Services. We awarded that project to Huckabee Architects, and so they're here this evening to present their findings to you. We have two members here this evening, Mr. Brendan Hoffman and Mr. Ben Harris. And so they will briefly walk you through some of their findings. As you saw in the documentation in your board book, the executive summary was 216 pages, plus there was some appendices after that. So a very thorough report, and I'll let them walk you through what they saw.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Morrison, members of the board. Thank you for having us this evening. Like Chris mentioned, there's a 217-page book in front of you. It's really awesome to read every word, and I'm going to try not to go through every word tonight. That would take a little too long. I was joking earlier, I can talk fast, but not that fast. So jumping right in, we wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to partner with you through this. It was a great opportunity to work with your administrators, your staff, your teachers, and everyone who walked the buildings. As we went through this, I wanted to start with the team that joined us on this journey. So as Huckabee Architects, we walked the buildings. And when we did that, we brought along with us civil engineers, Kim Lee Horn, structural engineer on certain campuses based on just recommendations and in talking with staff, Wiz Janey or WJE. Looking at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing and technology was LTY Engineers. Food service, so your kitchens, your equipment, all that stuff within a kitchen, was FDP, food design professionals. And looking at roofing and other components of the building on the facade was Coonan Associates. So the objective of this, as we started on looking at the facilities, was really to observe the general conditions of the campuses and then provide recommendations with regards to those elements. So tonight, in lieu of going through every single one, we're going to go through four different campuses, one elementary, one junior high, the high school, and just an ancillary facility, which happens to be this building. As you read through the report, though, just to point out a couple things, in there you'll see some words, good, fair, poor, bad, and everyone has different definitions of those. So we tried to kind of break that down here in this presentation to let you know that good is when you have a building and you're doing preventative maintenance to try and keep it going and make sure everything's going well, and you're doing that. Fair is when you start to budget for that replacement, because it's going to become something that needs to be done relatively soon or in the future. Poor is when the maintenance costs can exceed the replacement cost, and it's nearing the end of its life. So things just have a lifecycle cost, and there are analyses that are run in order to understand what those are, and that's how you end up with fair, poor. When we jump into bad, that's when we were talking about, okay, it's time to really review these things and get them done pretty quickly to make sure that there isn't any more, there aren't any more issues that can come about. So there were a few general observations as you read through this report that you're going to notice over and over again in each one of the buildings. There are some adoptions of code that were made where their campuses need radio repeaters in order to ensure that anyone communicating from the outside, whether it be the police department, fire department, responding authorities, have a repeater signal within your building. The building needs to be tested at a minimum, and that's normally done by the fire marshal's office. They'll come out and do that test. And then if there are findings that say that there's not enough coverage, a radio repeater would need to be added. That's a pretty general comment across all campuses. The review and replacement of fluorescent fixtures with LED fixtures throughout the campuses is another comment that it is in line with 2015 IECC. It's something that you can do as you start to look at the replacement of fixtures, or if you leave in and just replace the ballast of an old fluorescent fixture. Going back with LEDs allows you to only have to replace certain components that feed the diode as opposed to the actual fixture itself. At each campus, there is a generator. However, that generator in most cases simply serves the kitchen equipment. It doesn't serve anything else within the building. Your light fixtures, your other elements are run on battery backup, which has constant maintenance that has to take place every time one of those battery goes out, once it's been identified and maintenance is notified. And then there's also the consideration of the development of ed specs and tech specs to make sure that as you do some of these improvements to each one of the campuses, it's keeping it comparable at each campus and creating a plan to say, this is what we're going to do, why we're going to do it, and tying it into, as Dr. Morrison mentioned, a strategic plan as you develop moving forward.
And if we can just linger on that for one second, what will be additional information coming to the board will be the ed specs around comparable facilities. That really is looking at, you know, we might have a facility, a school that has a media center or library, but are they comparable? And what does that look like? And so we will spec that out and work to bring a comparability study to the board. That will be another aspect of this. And then the tech specs are important as well. We're at a time period now where we need to create digitally rich learning opportunities for our students. That was important before all the challenges of remote instruction and COVID happened this year. The needs that we had before that didn't go away. And so as we continue to try to think about how we're going to add to our instructional offerings, making sure that all of our campuses are digitally rich, areas of opportunities for our students, making sure every classroom can have digitally enriching instruction. And that requires a commitment to infrastructure. And that means to make sure that we have connectivity, that we have the correct wiring, the drops. All those things that people don't see, they just walk into a classroom and say, yeah, okay, I see one-to-one with every student having a laptop or a device. But if you don't have the ability to make those devices work, then we have not invested wisely. So those, that text bug will be another amount of information that will be coming to the board in the very near future.
Thank you. As we went through gathering the information, as we went campus to campus, it was a challenging year. So we went after hours. We were in the building, so we were able to look at a lot of things. We didn't test equipment. We didn't run analysis on fire alarm systems or fire suppression systems. That's something that's done by a testing agency. But we were able to get in, and we used a software called BIM 360, and we go through and we log issues, deficiencies, issues, as we walk the building. And in those issues, we created little tag, and that tag has parcels of information to which we can apply cost. So on this next slide, what you're going to see is some of the starts of what that looks like. It's in your packet, you can see it's broken down a little bit differently with the words on the left describing each one of these images so that you can understand what the image is indicating. So at Stewart Creek Elementary, as an example, as we walked the building, there were some HVAC items, a lot of mechanical, electrical, plumbing and technology items that really came out to the forefront of needs. You can see on the right-hand side of this document, and this will help you understand as you're reading it, the right-hand side, the circular chart, is an identification of the number of issues that were allocated to each item. So it's not necessarily related to cost, it's related to issues. The bottom portion is designated for cost. So when you see that, you start to see how that's distributed amongst each category. So you know what's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology, finishes, exterior, interior, windows, walls, broken down in categories to understand that. It's important to mention that this cost that's associated today is today's cost. It doesn't include additional other things that go along with doing projects. This is simply, if you were to have a construction cost today, that would be the value today. And we've seen some things that are happening, so just to make you aware of that little comment on cost for today. As we went over to Montgomery Junior High, there were also some more mechanical, electrical, plumbing and technology items that came to light again, and it was a predominant factor with regards to Montgomery Junior High. There were other items within the building, such as roofing, roofing penetrations, and making sure that those elements are looked at. And so the recommendations listed within there are the bullet points below each heading that you'll see. They're the little plus signs after each heading, and it kind of makes those recommendations. And then the cost is based on those recommendations. As we jump over to Montgomery High School, again, this one, we saw a substantial jump. This is also Montgomery High School and the Ninth Grade Center. So this is both campuses rolled into one. So you really do have to think of these two as two buildings, because at one time they were. So there is a substantial amount that was reviewed. For example, the chillers are the same at both campuses. However, they're vastly different in ages and need different amounts of work on both, as well as the boilers, they're different types, and so they also need to be worked on in a different way. But they have different costs associated with it. There were some settlement items that were brought up, and so there are some structural recommendations with regards to the settlement of the building at the Ninth Grade Center, which is also beginning to have some impact on the roofing system, where there is... where there is some apparent separation of the base material to create bubbling and allow water infiltration in some areas. But you'll see that within, in the report broken down under each category so that you can have an opportunity to understand what that is, what it means, and then steps forward can be addressed.
So, this 19 million that I'm seeing here, that's, that's what needs to be, that's what you see today?
If you were to take the recommendations that are made, so replacing the lighting, infrastructure in an entire facility is, is a substantial cost. Replacing the HVAC systems throughout, replacing generators throughout, looking at the upgrading of kitchen equipment throughout, those are, those are elements that have true cost associated to them. And so, yes, they're 19 million based on the recommendations. You don't necessarily have to do every single recommendation, and so as we get to the end, I'll, I'll kind of talk a little bit about what it would look like if you were to package things, put things together, and start to look at creating projects over time to, to either say, this is priority one, priority two. We can build plans that can help you get there to say, let's prioritize this into a maintenance plan, and that's a next step in the creation after you have an assessment. So, then we jump into this building, the Educational Support Center, and this one, it has a, some issues up front, at the front of the building. If you've been up there, you've, you've seen those. So, that was a primary component of some of the things that need to be done. But there are also elements related to the, the air conditioning system in this one, the MEPT systems, the lighting in this one as well. A lot of just elements that are things that you would update if you wanted to bring it into compliance with current codes and then use the building to its fullest potential for the longest life. We start to look at things when we talk about cost versus the value of a building. We start to look at what that might mean, and that's another next step that we can take when we start to see values like this come up on a building of this scale. And there are different conversations that we would have with administration and then you all if, if there needs to be a conversation on that. And so, in summary, there's a sheet within your book as well that the cost analysis is based on each recommendation. And if you identify construction scope from each one of these and say that there are certain elements within it that you want to package into a project, that can become a project. It's not that you necessarily have to do each one. You do have benefit of doing each one. Once you start construction on a job, packaging like elements together, getting similar contractors in a space and doing the work at once is, can be of benefit to the district, however it's, however you choose to move forward. This total here that you see is all of the campuses that we went to, and we went to ancillary buildings, transportation centers, ag buildings. We went to every building, so you'll see them all listed in there. And we took images, we have pictures. Chris mentioned their appendices. So, for each one of these, there's even more from each one of the engineering reports that we can have printed and given to you guys, but we have access to if you need access to them. Every single report has its own appendices, and we have cost analysis on each item that was identified as well. And so-
Mr. Hoffman, I will, just want to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt you on that. This booklet does have, on average, about six to eight pictures on every page, for those that are interested. And, you know, it really gives us a really great story, so thank y'all for the richness of it. I did not know we have some of these issues in our, in our buildings, and it's a little stark for me, so.
I'm sitting here thinking exactly the same thing. So, I guess, I was actually going to mention something else. I, I guess, wow. So, is this, is this all, is this, how much of this is dire? I mean, how much of this is, is, is you got to get it done now, and I'm not looking for individual projects, and, and I understand that piece of it. But from a dollar standpoint, we've got, what, 63 million in, in recommendations here? What percentage of that is, we got, we got, we got some issues we got to fix? I mean, that's kind of what I want to, where are we at in terms of the scale of, this is really critical as a whole, and I want a kind of a generic picture of, you know, where do we stand as a whole?
So, at first, from our standpoint in development of the just assessment, we're looking, when we go in, that's why it's important to note, we're looking at general observations that we're, we're looking at and just saying, this is the, the good, poor, bad, you know, the four words we used in each one to make sure that we're actually identifying those. We can, we can then go into the next step, which would be creating that concept that you're saying. Do we need to prioritize the bad and say, what is bad, what needs to be a priority, and how do we plan to address that moving forward?
How, how much of that percentage of the 63 million is poor, fair, good? Where does that look, what does that look like?
We have not broken down the data to that level yet.
But I'll give an example. Yesterday, I had to send the staff that was working at Stewart Creek Elementary School home to do work at home because we did not have air conditioning in the building. It was an inconvenience because people were working at the school. If this had been a school day, I worried that we would not have been able to continue with instruction, so.
Yeah, and remember, this is, this is a process, okay? So, this is the first step in this facility assessment process. We have to have the data first, and now that we have it, we can start to break that data down by campus or project or whatever. Good, fair, poor, bad, and really start digging in and, and having conversations with the board and this community about what needs to happen, how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, okay? But this is just really kind of a very brief introduction tonight into what has been found so far.
Was some of the issues for some of these items not proper PMs over the years? Or is it just, everything's just worn out on some stuff?
You know, I think being somebody new coming into the district, one of the first things that I heard was, you know, financially, there were a lot of things that were pushed from one year to the next, hoping that the financial situation may improve and, and there may be monies to, to do a project the following year that really needed to be done this year. You know, sure, I'm sure there probably are a few things that, you know, could have been, you know, maintained a little bit better. I think in any organization, you probably have some of that. But I think the vast majority of it was trying to manage a robust number of needs with unlimited amount of financial opportunity. Keep in mind, you know, outside of bond funding or, or some type of capital improvement program, this, the money for these repairs would need to come from the general operating fund. And so, you know, when a chiller is $250,000, equate that to roughly four to five teachers, okay? So, are we willing to give up a significant number of teachers to replace a chiller? We have to have both in order to operate this district. So, sometimes there were just hard decisions that were made. We're going to wait on some of those needed repairs and hope that the financial condition improves.
Do we have, and this may be too early of a question, but do we have the right organizational structure to be able to take this in, you know, let's, let's say it's a, it's 63 million. We come up with 63 million and we pay for all this, right? What, how do we prevent it from becoming a big snowball 10 years from now? Do we have the right staff in place in, in facilities management practices, metrics, staff in place to be able to prevent that in the future, to make sure that it doesn't become a $63 million snowball?
Sure.
And I know it's a very early question, but-
And, and it, you know, it's a little unfair at this point to be able to put an answer to that question. It's not, it's not that I want to dodge the question, but we really do need to thoroughly evaluate the information in this report so that we can clearly, we, I mean, we haven't even identified the plan yet on what needs to be done. So, let's go through this logically. Let's figure out what the needs are. Let's figure out how we're going to meet those needs. And then, beyond that, let's figure out how we're going to maintain, once we fix these needs, so that it doesn't hit us all at one time again.
As we develop, breaking down the data that should be on share with you this evening, and then some of the other data that I suggested is coming, we'll start to put together for the board's review and approval, a capital improvement plan. And people will say, well, you just passed the school improvement plan. That really speaks to, there are elements of, of efficiency and operations, but a capital improvement plan is really what it sounds like. It is, you know, what's the cycle for roof replacement? What's the cycle for maintenance equipment replacement? You know, and we can put those things on a cycle with an anticipation of budgeting appropriately. And then, there's always going to be unexpected things that happen. And then, how do we, you know, really manage our resources well so that when a need bumps another need, that we can be transparent, inform the board, inform the community, and then commit to going back to that need that got pushed. And I think to Mr. Dennison's question, I think this, you know, there, these needs have been around for a long time, and they kept getting pushed. And without a plan that we can put out and, and put out to our public and so that they can see, well, you know, when should I expect this to be fixed on my campus, or when is this in a cycle be replaced? It doesn't really look like we're being as thoughtful as we could be. So, we're start putting that together, and that will be the next round of work for the board's approval.
I appreciate y'all saying that. If the community doesn't know, this is our first time seeing, this is pretty much everybody's first time seeing it. So, it does feel like a little bit of an elephant to us right now, and there's only one way to eat an elephant, and that's bite by bite. So, thank y'all for reminding us to take it slow. Mr. Hoffman, you had mentioned, you had alluded to that toward the end, you have some prioritized kinds of things. Anything else you want to throw in there for us? Anything else you want to push, push forward with?
One of the important things to remember is as we walk through the assessment is that this is going to be a living document. So, we are going to, now that, so it's, it's a little, you plan the work, work the plan, but first you have to identify the work, plan the work, work the plan in this case. So, this is the identify the work part, and we're going to plan the work, and then work the plan. So, I think it's just important to, that's what we'll be doing in the background with administrative staff and everyone to work towards that preventative maintenance plan, to make sure that that's developed in a way that that makes sense. Prioritization is based upon what you prioritize, because only you can define that.
And, and we are going to have a capital, capital maintenance fund in our budget?
Yeah, those will, those will be discussions for the future as to how we figure out, you know, obviously, when we have a roughly an $80 million budget, and if we were just using, doing every recommendation that was presented tonight, that's $64 million. So, you know, I, I don't know how we get there in an $80 million budget overnight. So, those are all conversations that have to take place as we go through and really dive into the details and figure out the work that needs to be done, and then we'll figure out how we're going to pay for that work.
We do, we do appreciate the partnership and being able to work with you on this.
Well, thank you. As you were presenting, I've made it to page 32.
Okay.
And so, I am one of those folks that likes to read this stuff because, you know, this is where our kids spend most of their time, this is where our staff spend most of their time, and we owe it to them to put them in the best facility possible. So, I want to say thank you for your thoroughness. Board members, are there any other comments, questions?
I think we've got our first red item.
Indeed. And Mr. Lynn, this will be posted where on the website?
Yeah, well, I don't know specifically where we'll post that, but we will get it posted on the website.
Financial transparency, probably.
Probably.
Thank you.
So, not to completely end on a bad note, just, I do see a couple of trends, as I said. Read through a few things, lots of roofing, lots of technology, lots of kind of water going places, water shouldn't go things. What's something we're doing great? What's something we're doing really well, Brendan?
So, there, there are, the good thing about, or the, I guess the bad thing about an assessment is we only look for the things that aren't doing well. When you do go to your facilities that were touched in the last bond, a lot of those buildings were, flooring was replaced, exterior windows, where you have your caulking was replaced. You had some glazing that was replaced. You had a lot of things that were done well. There were just some things that, again, budgetary items were chosen to say, push it to the next, and we'll take care of it. And some of those are like your lighting systems. Those are things that do get pushed and were, and have substantial cost. And then, when it comes to your mechanical equipment in, again, the facilities that did get upgrades, those are, if you read through and see some of those that were touched in the last bond, they do have fewer items that are related to mechanical necessities. There are some things where one, one chiller or where one air handler was replaced, and the other wasn't. So, there's still some that needs to be done, but it was a, at that time, a cost benefit analysis. But, yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions? We'll be in touch, I'm sure, and please, thank you to take our thanks back to your company for all the work you've done.
Yes, sir. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Next, the 2021 fiscal year update from Mr. Lynn.
All right. Let's talk about budget one more time. So, as Kim is pulling it up, I, we wanted to give you an update of where the 2122 fiscal year budget is at this point, as we get close to budget adoption. And to tie it into our previous action item of the night, how budget and strategic plan obviously play hand in hand. Goal three, finance and operations, talks about how we will responsibly manage the use of financial and operational resources in our budget. Specifically, performance objective number two, how we're going to utilize a transparent collaborative budget process, culminating in the adoption of a balanced budget. And these aren't just words on a page, and I hope by now people are starting to see that, that this truly is action. And some of the things that we've done through this development process, remember, we've said this should be a process. Budget development should not be a single event where we show up in the month of June and say, here, pass this, and we go away until you see us again the following June. We have had to collect a lot of data during this process and gather information. We have used our principals, our administrative team, to provide informa, you know, provide assistance in identifying staff inefficiencies and with the creation of the salary proposals that, that you've approved. We've had two community budget town hall meetings to really focus on that transparency. We've had 10 budget roadshow meetings, one at each campus. We've had individual meetings with impacted groups. And of course, we've had budget workshops, and we've had conversations here at this board meeting multiple times throughout this process to try and keep this on the forefront and show that we are being transparent, and it is truly a collaborative process. Just to touch on a little bit of the basics, sometimes people forget. One of the most important things is our fiscal year, and it starts July 1, and it runs through June 30. So, that's why we're having those conversations now about adopting next year's fiscal budget. Without that budget being adopted prior to June 30th, then financial transactions at the district cease, and none of us want that to happen. According to the state guidelines for a district with our fiscal year, the budget must be prepared no later than June 19th. Here we are, June 15th, budget's already prepared, so we're, we're ahead of that schedule. At the budget adoption, the board is legally required to adopt three funds. The general fund, the child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. And just a little preview of our last slide, budget adoption will occur on Tuesday, June 29th at 5:30 PM here in, in this room. So, let's take a look at those three proposed budgets. And so, what you have on your screen is a layout of the general fund, the student nutrition, and the debt service funds. And so, starting with the general fund, you see the top three columns are the estimated revenue amounts. And so, you have local, state, and federal revenue estimated to come in at 79, just over $79.5 million. When you adopt the budget, this is actually how you are adopting it. You're adopting it at the functional level, and so that's why you see the expenditures broken out into the different functions. Added up all of those functions totaled to $79.3 million. So, with 79.5 million in revenue, 79.3 million in expenditures, I'm rounding for rough numbers, we have additional revenue, a balanced budget in the amount of $284,225.
Can you say those two words again, Mr. Lynn?
We have a balanced budget with additional revenue of $284,225. So, back to performance objective two, transparent, collaborative, and budget, and balanced. So, I think we're doing pretty good so far. Student nutrition, revenues of $4.7 million with anticipated expenditures of 4.6. Once again, a balanced budget with $103,000 in additional revenue. Debt service, remember, the debt service fund is what we use to pay our bond indebtedness that was voted on by the community. So, this is how we pay our bond payments. Revenues of $24.1 million compared to expenditures of $23.6 million, $450, roughly $1,000 more in revenue than expenditure. So, we will be presenting three balanced budgets for you on the 29th. So, let's take a little closer look at our general fund. As I said, for the revenue portion of it, we have three different areas where we get our revenues. our revenues. For local, when we talk about local, we're talking about property taxes, we're talking about tuition and fees, so, you know, those pre-K kids who were, are wanting to come to our district and get started early but may not, you know, necessarily qualify, they pay pre-K tuition. We also have local sources through many different things and athletic activities. And so once again, those are just a few of the things that make up our local revenue, and that's projected to be sixty-seven-point-three million dollars. At the state level, we receive money from the state in two basic ways, the available school fund and the foundation payments, and so that is about ten-point-eight million. And then on the federal side, we receive money from CHARS, our participation in MAC, and federal E-rate reimbursements, and that's about one-point-four million. So when you break all of those pieces together, you can see that roughly just under eighty-five percent of our total general fund revenue comes from local sources, about just under fourteen percent from state sources, and a little under two percent from federal sources. Just trying to educate so people understand where our money comes from. When we look at the expenditures, we look at them on a couple of different areas. This first chart shows how the expenditures break down by major object, and so this is where we can see how much we have budgeted for salary and benefits, how much do we have for professional and contracted services, supplies and materials, upper, other operating expenses and capital purchases. And so roughly, the chart tells you that roughly eighty percent of the district's budget goes towards salary and benefits, and that's very typical for school districts across the state of Texas. The second highest category is professional and contracted services. Remember, that number's going to be a little bit higher here in Montgomery ISD because we contract out for our custodial services, we also contract out for our landscaping. In some districts, that money would be in the salary and benefits, okay? Another way that we look at our expenditures is based on the program level, and so we drill down and we actually look at what's basic education, career in tech, special ed, and go through all of those different program intents. And so the, the two largest groups are basic educational services and district-wide. Now, district-wide doesn't mean that it's not instructionally based, that's just a program intent based on the TEA Financial Accountability System Resource Guide about how we code things. So things like your library, your counselors are actually coded in ninety-nine district-wide, even though they take place on a campus, okay? So just wanted to give you a real quick overview of what you're going to be seeing on the twenty-ninth. Hopefully that'll make that meeting maybe a little quicker so you can get out of here a little early. But at this point, like I said, everything is done. Our ad for the newspaper will be coming out in the next couple of days, and the ad will tell everybody that we will be adopting the budget on Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at five-thirty PM at that meeting. If someone wishes to speak about the budget or make comments, they will have that opportunity. And after that, we will adopt the budget and we will move on to next fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I don't hear any questions, so Mr. Lynn, thank you, we will see you on the twenty-ninth.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Next, we have a first reading of a local policy educational philosophy. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. As we went through our journey of developing the strategic plan, we did go back and look to make sure that we were honoring the vision and the mission as it was established in previous areas of school policy. We looked at it several times as we got closer to the plan being finalized and decided that, that there was a little bit of alignment that we needed to, to correct, especially with the stated purpose of what a vision should be versus a mission. And so as we completed the work on the draft strategic plan, we also took the opportunity, as we shared at the workshop several weeks back, to make suggestions around the district's vision and mission. So Justin, would you like to share the update on that?
Once again, good evening, board, Dr. Morrison. Yep, the, the proposed update to the mission and vision puts it in alignment with, with the strategic plan and the five board adopted goals. The mission touches on increasing academic, academic outcomes, ensuring safe, our schools are safe, places where a positive academic instruction can occur, ensuring we're exercising, being responsible for, sorry about that, fiduciary ta-
Officers of taxpayer dollars.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
Gotcha.
Ensuring that we're hiring, recruiting, and retaining the top-quality staff and that we're communicating effectively with our, with our stakeholders. Our mission statement is still that we will strive to be the premier school district in the state of Texas, so.
And so because it is a change to policy, this is a first reading, and then if you are so inclined, then we will be asking for you to vote on this at the June twenty-ninth board meeting.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions? That is provided in-
Board book.
Board book on page five-eighty-one. No questions, we will move on to monthly financial report. Any questions? Okay, the board does have to return to closed session for a few minutes, and so we will go into closed session for the reasons listed on our agenda as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Don't go too far, we'll be back shortly. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for waiting. There, that was a very short, brief meeting, there were no action items to be taken, so with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.